We're gonna call the September 7th Planning Commission meeting to order is 6:38. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and it is a republic for which there stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, microphones please. Item number three is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
We've got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Item four, consent agenda. We just have the Planning Commission meetings minutes from the July 6th meeting. Any corrections or notes to those?
No.
I can approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Next item is open forum. Open forum is public comments limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. Is there anyone here for open forum? All right. Assuming anyone online?
Only applicants.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, council updates.
So for August 8th, we had a work session on the budget. There's a lot of details around that. If you're curious, you might want to just watch that. We also had closed sessions. One was regarding the housing first lawsuit. And the other one was, for an undisclosed reason, 22nd, same thing. We had a long budget session. And quarterly update. What else? Oh, there was a change order to West French Lake Road activity, and I think that's it. Yep.
All right. We don't have it on here. I guess I should have added it when we approved the agenda, but staff updates? Is it active? You want to introduce your new staff?
Introduce my new staff? Yes, so Planning Chair and members of the Planning Commission. We have John Tiefeld starting. This is his first Planning Commission meeting as a staff member. He is our new Community Development Director, and we are excited to have him on board as staff. But I don't have any other staff updates, so.
It's a pleasure to meet you guys.
Oh, and then, I wouldn't say new staff.
Yeah.
Because Tori, you've been around for a while. But we also have Tori Leonhardt, who is our Associate Planner 2. She's been around since May, so again, that's not serious new staff anymore. She's a part of the group. But we're happy to have her here as well, and she comes with a lot of experience. She comes from the city of Greenfield, so we look forward to having her experience and expertise here. Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. And then, I guess I had one question on item five. Are the consent plans, that's not a public, which one of these are public hearings? Because consent plans aren't public hearings, are they?
All four, because we posted for a public hearing, just to let people know that we're doing a concept plan. Well, it's not saying that they're required for a concept plan, still posted, same as we did with the Rover.
Okay.
They reviewed last two weeks ago.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that, so. All right, then we'll move on to item 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. For item 7A, that was an application for a variance for an accessory structure. Staff worked with the applicant to modify plans and have them qualify for the exemption under the code, so they did withdraw that application. So that application is no longer before you, no longer necessary. So now the process moving forward would be the applicant would apply for a building permit for their accessory structure.
Perfect.
So there's no further action needed on the item.
All right. Then item 7B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, before you tonight, you have a concept plan from Enclave Companies. So they are the applicant. It is a concept for seven, three-story multifamily apartment buildings. The location is 16850 Territorial Road. It does include, there's three parcels within this, so there's the, you may be familiar with it because you've reviewed two concepts prior, I believe, on this site. It's the Stensley property. It's 25.6 acres, guided mixed use, which has a minimum density of 12 units an acre. Currently zoned A1 agricultural, so will need to be rezoned with any formal development application. And it is in the current MUSE staging area, so it is ready with utilities available. As far as natural resources, there are some significant natural resources on this site. One wetland will be impacted, so this is, you know, there's the eastern wetland is the larger wetland complex that would be impacted slightly for, sorry, the eastern wetland complex will be preserved, except for the access that does cross the ephemeral stream, which is not a body of water that we have to buffer from, but it's just noted that it's on there and that we have to cross it. And then the wetland on the west would be the one that is impacted adjacent to County Road 81. And then there's a well into the north. So those are the natural resource impacts or constraints along this site. Kind of go over some of the features on the site plan. So you can see the wetland on, so east is to the upper right side of the screen, north is to the upper left. So there is the wetland that is on that west side adjacent to County Road 81 that is impacted. On the east, the wetland is preserved, and the wetland to the north is preserved as part of that area. There are multiple easements on this property that are existing easements. So there is a gas easement, a 50-foot-wide pipeline easement that runs from west to east along the property, along the north portion of the property. And then there's an existing city-owned 30-foot-wide drainage and utility easement for when the sanitary sewer was extended. So the sanitary sewer exists up here and is, follows within this 30-foot easement that jogs all the way down to territorial. So you can see the kind of unique nature of that easement in there. So those are some of the other constraints outside of the natural resources. As far as the site plan as a whole, I'll start on the right side of the screen and just move left as we go across. So there is proposed to be infrastructure improvements and roadway improvements to the territorial and County Road 81 intersection. So you can see the existing, in the slightly lighter hashed, is the existing territorial access on the County Road 81. As part of the project, they would realign that territorial road access out to 81, further to the south, and then provide access for the property as a new leg off of that territorial road. So that's planned as part of the project. As we move to the west then, they do access in and creates a loop for parking throughout the whole site. Four apartment buildings on the backside from County Road 81, and three that back up onto County Road 81, with a clubhouse and amenity center between the two southernmost buildings on the west-hand side. The center buildings in here are detached garage areas, 26 stalls each, so that makes up some of the underground parking. As I mentioned, they're three-story buildings, so each of these buildings you see has, the first floor is tuck-under garages, then the second and third are living spaces, so there is no underground parking as part of this. It's at-grade on the first floor, and then the second and third floors above that are units. They do have 790 total parking stalls, once you calculate all the parking within the garages under the building, the garage stalls plus all the surface parking, which does meet the minimum required parking of two per unit for multifamily with one parking space per every, five units for guest parking, so essentially 2.1 stalls is what it comes out to be for multifamily. You'll notice two on here, a couple other points of interest. They do have an emergency access route shown on here. I'll talk a little bit more about access in a second. And then they do have a trail running through the backside with compensatory stormwater storage back there, as they're pretty limited with the easements and the wetland on what you can do back there. Those are the major features of the site. It does border County Road 81, so there is buffering and a fire access path that'll be along County Road 81, along with some other buffering on the edge of the properties as They did submit example elevations. I just threw a couple. All the rest of them were in your packet, as these are just example buildings that they would include, so it won't be the same colors, but this is just to depict some of the styles of architecture they would use. So they are planning, these buildings shown here are a four-story building, but they are planning three stories, so these show roughly the same height of building, it's just the first floor would be parking and not units. But the same type, and then the architecture they're planning on doing is the hip roof or the, not a flat roof style, and then just some example architectural treatments that they put in the building, so they would have to meet the city code. We don't do the evaluation at the concept plan stage, but you know, for percentage of materials, breaks in the facade, windows, things like that. For some of the applications that were required, if this moved forward from concept plan, they'd need a comprehensive plan, or they wouldn't need a comprehensive plan for staging, that's an error. They'll need a rezoning from A1 to GMU1, which is the mixed-use zoning district that applies, a preliminary plat and a final plat. At this stage, we haven't, none of the portions we reviewed like parking or density or anything would require a planned unit development so far. So at this point, they don't need any flexibilities, however, if they move forward and some things can't be worked around on the site, and they may need flexibility, they could certainly move forward with the PUD, but at this point, we haven't identified that one would be necessary. So there's 363 units total on the site, one, two, and three-bedroom dwelling units, a mix of each of those. They have both 54 and 49 unit buildings, a little bit of both on the site plan, and it comes out to about a, you know, rough calculation, because at this point, you don't have all the full site design information, but it's a rough net density of 14.2 units an acre.
For clarification, is that net or gross? Because in the packet, there was a couple places where it said gross. That's the gross.
That, yeah, that's the gross, right. Net is much closer to 20, I believe. Sorry, that was.
You think it's closer to 20?
Yeah. Perfect. Once it comes out to be, just apologize for the error there in the PowerPoint. Just some rough development standards, I throw them off on here because this is what they'll need to follow. The site plan does comply with all of these for lot size and lot width. As you can see, it's a large lot, and they did, I'll run back to the site plan really quick, they do have a proposed lot split. It's hard to follow on here. In fact, I can't even find the line on here. It's basically a phasing lot split, so that they separate how many apartment buildings they'd be building, so they do a lot split to separate the two. I don't know if it's shown on the image, I actually have it included in the PowerPoint, but that's what they do as part of that. Setbacks, they are meeting the setbacks from the front side rear of the site to County Road 81, and then territorial, and then the north and the east side as well. The buildings can be up to 45 feet or four stories, so they're meeting that requirement as well. Access points. So access is a big constraint on this site, or it's a difficult piece to work through. So there are three recommended accesses from staff. Primary full access will be from territorial road to the south, so they'll be responsible for the new roadway alignment of territorial and County Road 81. The secondary emergency access, right-in, right-out, or is proposed to be upgraded to a right-in, right-out, instead of just an emergency access, so it's basically a second public access that you would be utilized as either a right-in, right-out, or a three-quarter onto County Road 81. That would, whether it's a right-in, right-out, or three-quarter, would be future conversations with the county. The county is more open to the, or you know, they would prefer the right-in, right-out, because they always try to limit three-quarter accesses, meaning a turn lane on County Road 81 as you head south that would turn into the project. They'd more like to see the right-in, right-out coming north and then, you know, entering with a right-hand turn and then exiting with a right-hand turn to the north on that site. And then there's a third future alternate access point north of the site that would connect into 113th Avenue and likely into the future Dayton Parkway to the north, so the city is asking that the site plan be accommodating to allow a connection to be through there, now that they would construct it with this project, but to plan for a connection to be there in the future as part of that. And there was a drawing in the package showing, depicting those three accesses and what would likely be, where they would be and what's required of each of those. So this is that drawing. You can see, A, on the full access to the right-hand side or south of the screen, south of the site, B being the secondary access, so moving that to the north to increase the spacing between the territorial road and County Road 81 intersection, so moving that up, and that would either be the right-in, right-out or three-quarter access. That could be mobile, depending on staff recommended lining it up with the access drive aisle that accesses the back half of the parking area, so if that does shift in a future plan, just lining it up with that would make the most sense in terms of access safety and circulation for vehicles. And then maintaining a easement or access to the easement for the option to go to the north for 113th and Dayton Parkway through that area, and that would just be a private access road for emergency vehicles, but maintaining it there that would then connect into 113th, and then there would be a full public road that is planned from 113th to Dayton Parkway, where that takes place, we don't know at this time, but preserving so that there could be emergency services to access through without having to take longer routes.
Does, does that see access, I guess, in comparison to the property to the north?
It avoids the existing business that's on that property, because that's a larger parcel up there, so it does skirt the different, there's a wetland directly north.
That's what I was gonna say.
So it'd be on the east side of the wetland, but not close to the, like, as far away from the business without impacting the wetland is the alignment, and that would be, you know, confirmed through an engineering study before anything would be.
Okay.
Proposed, but that's where the access is likely would occur. Utilities, they do have a 12-inch trunk water main that exists along territorial road to provide service to the site. An additional connection for, you know, redundancy should be made, but as a utility plan's developed for future submittals, we would evaluate that. They do have a 30-foot-wide DNUE easement, as I mentioned, that runs north to south through the site with the existing 12-inch sanitary sewer through there.
Is this 12-inch through here, is that Maple Grove water, or is that Dayton water?
I believe it's Maple Grove, but I'd have to confirm with the city engineer. I don't, not.
It'd be Maple Grove.
Maple Grove, okay. Just wanted to make sure we have.
Should say Maple Grove for now.
Yeah. Understood, understood. It's connected to the Maple Grove system right now, so it's not taken away from water towers elsewhere in Dayton.
As I mentioned, parking, they do meet the requirement with 762 spaces required, or sorry, yeah, 762 spaces, there's a carryover from a previous PowerPoint. 762 spaces required with 790 proposed, or 706 proposed, I believe, but they do meet the parking. I think I forgot to update this slide.
Kevin, one thing we should probably add to our agenda, because this has happened to every single multifamily property that comes through us, is we all acknowledge our parking code is, it's asking too much, because it only does it on a per-unit basis. We should be looking at bedrooms and mother stuff like that.
We have.
That seems really excessive. I'm curious what the applicant says, but that seems excessive.
Yeah, we do have it on a staff level to review. That's on the work, outlook of work plan, yeah. Parks and trails, so they do provide the trails and passive and active space on the northeast corner. It's proposed over a 50-foot pipeline easement, so they will need to get that approved if they propose to do it. The pipeline easement holder would have to approve the impact to their easement area, but that would come forward with likely more of a final design and final approvals. And they will be provide a transportation trail along County Road 81 and territorial road. They do have a clubhouse along there, so the clubhouse could connect into the trail system on 81 if they chose to do so from there. Landscaping, tree preservation, screening, I don't go into too much on concept plan. They'll need to meet the landscaping and tree preservation requirements, and they'll need a 35-foot-wide buffer along the entire boundary of County Road 81 to meet the buffering requirements on that roadway, so the final site design should reflect that as part of the screening requirements. And then they'll also be required to buffer along the northern property line to the industrial uses, so there'll likely be some type of buffer up there, what, how that takes place. We'll come forward with a preliminary plat or the next application that would come in. So the role tonight for you as commissioners is to review the concept plan and provide informal comments that will be passed to the city council. There's no action needed on the item, and any comments are informal, but just to make your comments known to the applicant for their future consideration with future submittals. And the applicant is present tonight for any questions you may have as well. With that, if there's any questions for staff, you can go ahead and ask me, or we can invite the applicant up to speak, and then, this is a, we did post it for a public hearing, so we will have a public hearing following that.
Would you like to come forward and discuss your project?
Where am I, here?
Yeah.
This is very eastern. Some cities are way back a mile away.
Name and address.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Brahma. I am with Enclave. Address is 1660 South Highway 100, St. Louis Park, Minnesota. Good evening, glad to be here with you. Should I pause? Do you have specific questions, or do you want me to jump in and introduce myself? Or I'm glad to take it any way you like it.
I don't have any initial questions.
I got a couple. I guess my first question would be about the parking, and it's twofold. I know our code says that in this GMU1, we have a strong preference, doesn't say requirement, says preference, for underground parking. Is there, I guess, talk me through what, I'm not a fan of detached garage in the long run. I mean, I get why they're there, they're way cheaper than doing underground, I get it. But can you talk to me a little through about your idea and why you think the detached garages are preferred?
Sure. Yeah, so this project, I just want to make one clarification. As of, the plan for this project is all first, the first floor of all buildings will have tuck-under garages on the inside. So the inside corridor will be garages, the outside corridor will be walkout units. So it's a 50/50 split on the first floor of each building. Our goal always is one-to-one parking covered, so we actually would have the same minimum requirement regardless of what the city required for us, so we want to hit that covered. The, I mean, to be, you know, transparent, covered parking's very expensive. It's very challenging in this time to make any project work, especially when you add structured parking, you know, you're talking about adding concrete costs, and maybe you're aware of that world. So it's really just making a project work is really what it comes down to. You know, we prefer to have concrete where we can, but depending where you're at geographically, just the economics work or they don't, and this is just where we're at as far as rents and what's available in this market, it just doesn't lean structured parking.
Yeah, I guess I would just reiterate, I get why you're doing what you're doing, but I still have a strong preference for underground parking, because of the longevity and what it's gonna look like 20 years from now. It's just, I, I'm a real estate appraiser, and I do a lot of apartments, so I see what they look like 20, 40 years later. The garage doors, everything, it's just a different beast. And then the reality is, is that if you did underground parking, you'd probably go to a four-story building, is my guess, and eliminate the detached garages, and you'd create more green space, if you kept the unit count the same. So I get it, the economics of period with apartments, but that'd be my preference in feedback. So the other question I would have is about our parking requirements, not just even about your plan, but your experience with it, so maybe even helps us with our zoning code, but do you think, I know that you're going above our requirement. Is that maybe because of your tenant profile, having more cars, you're thinking, or?
Yeah, if I may, we would intend, I mean, our goal would be at, you know, blended rate of maybe a 1.75 ratio. That's what we think is needed, total for the whole site, per unit. Something like that. I'd want to do a slightly deeper dive based on rooms to what you alluded to. I think it was just the back and forth with this concept plan, why we ended up at that. We would, we would intend to come back down to the city's, we wouldn't do any more than what's required by the city, because we share the same feeling that it's, we don't feel that that amount of parking is required for our needs, or our residents or our guests.
Yeah. Yeah, generally, the rule of thumb that seems to work in the market is one covered stall per unit, and at least one, in total, one stall per bedroom. And then maybe, depending on your unit mix, maybe some additional guest parking, but if you have a lot of three-bedroom units, usually you don't need as much guest parking. But if you have a lot of three-bedroom units, usually you don't need as much guest parking. All right, yeah, I just, again, I, I would prefer to see all underground parking.
If, if I may add one comment to that, thank you for that. We, I mean, we do too, I'll be honest, I mean, that's, that's the preference also. Unfortunately, I just, you know, that's the reality of, what, what I do on my end is just gotta work, and that's what we run up against. The other thing that I mentioned, we have a physical constraint on this site, on, actually going underground for parking, just, it's already a tough site for a lot of reasons, floodplains, soil replacements, there's actually some wetlands that we're gonna, which is like, this costs are stacking up on the soil side of things. Going underground with parking will further exacerbate that, and I don't even know of where the water table is. I, I have a feeling we run into some issues with separation. Actually, we, without underground parking right now, we have to request a special exception from the city engineer to allow the separation that we have from stormwater to, to the buildings right now. So if we go below ground, I don't even think we'd comply. So we do need four stories out of ground, so first floor, so I'm just trying to, it would end up being a four-story out of ground and, and, you know.
And that's a very valid concern that would change my opinion if you couldn't physically go underground.
Is your concern, Darren, just trying to understand it, the wear and tear of the individual garage stalls?
Just the quality of the product and the longevity. I mean, the vast majority of the cities don't even, well, closer to the core, they've basically said, no detached garage. Blaine doesn't allow it, I know for a fact, there's a bunch that don't. They just, everyone, well, and plus when you do underground, you're constraining it to a footprint, so you're getting more green space, which I'd prefer green space myself and more height myself. I think that's a better product, but I, I get the cost changes.
I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking outside the box here, and I know you guys probably have products you worked with, if, if those center garage, detached garage stalls became more of a, one building per se with the clubhouse on top, you know, just something, something to think about, or you could have a larger amenity on top of that.
Yep.
And maybe.
The Berkshire Central in Blaine, if you're familiar with that, Schaefer Richardson, in fact, it's on the market, but they did that, they did a detached garage single structure, just with a flat roof though, nothing fancy on top of it.
That might actually go to some length to alleviate some of the concerns that, that fire had in there too, about being able to navigate emergency vehicles in and out of there, because with the garage spaces in there, it's already going to be a little tight, especially once you start having other residential parking kind of in there. If they've got to get to the interior of that complex, they're gonna go some, some interesting challenges to deal with.
What was that project?
Berkshire Central. Part of it's underground, but they couldn't get enough stalls underground, so they built a detached garage too. It's drive-through garage, one-way traffic. And even if you put two of them there, that, it would make the drive aisles that much wider because the, the drive aisles for the cars are in the buildings for emergency services. You guys do rental townhomes too. Was that considered on the site from you guys' perspective?
We actually don't do a lot of, we're getting into rental townhomes. We did, it's a very minor part of our portfolio, it's something we're just getting into now. We, on this particular site, no, we weren't considering townhomes. I know that one of the previous developers that pitched on the site was looking at townhomes. I'm not sure what the reason was they didn't move forward, if it was, you know, constrained with, I think it actually ended up being density. My understanding is when you switch to the density and you can't use that northeast corner because of all the challenges on the site, you can't even meet the density, minimum density requirement. I believe that was one of the major reasons why they couldn't move forward now. That's me just all third person, I don't know if any of that's true, but we didn't really consider it in great detail.
I remember when that came before us, one of the options that probably would have worked better, because with all the townhomes, it was like its own little city. But splitting the site in half, meaning then you'd get your density with the four-story building on one path to site and townhomes on the other, with one central community building.
I know it's stated, stated in the packet, a lot of my concerns are around just the flow of traffic with, with this connection to territorial and, and access not only on, onto eighty-one, but then a proposed access up to one-thirteenth. I, I appreciate that staff picked up on a proposed access. I don't know if that's in the right spot or not, but if it's there or if it's on the other corner of the site.
That was the, at this stage with the development plans we have now, that was the best guess from the city engineer, but we'd have to do further evaluation when a formal application came in.
Yeah. But some sort of access to the north for a future connection would be desired. The other one I had that I didn't, it's mostly wetland delineated property on the east side. And I know, I know it's not, not developed yet, but it's guided low-density to the east and just being mindful of landscaping along that side, future residential there, you know, adjacent to apartment buildings would be my, my other big concern. You know, we call out thirty-five foot on the other two sides because of the, the uses, maybe.
There is a substantial wetland there, Peter?
Yeah.
That separates them.
Understood, but maybe there's some high-quality, higher-quality plantings and stuff that could be added.
I don't necessarily have any questions. Couple of very honest opinions though, I think it's a pretty uninspiring layout. It's just really long, narrow apartments that ring, a flat triangle that create long walls. You know, driving along eighty-one, seeing three long buildings. And then if you do get a peek in, you just see more long buildings as you drive into the site. I feel like it's just, it's gonna be, feel very enclosed, and then you throw in all those garages in the middle too, where you really want the community to come together. You just put a bunch of garages there. And I know there's a lot of green space to the top side of the, the plan, as it's drawn with the eighty-one in the south. But there's very little view sheds even when you're in between the buildings. So those apartments that are lucky enough to back up against that green space will experience that, but none of the interior ones or the ones facing eighty-one get any really kind of green space feel to fit the idea of, you know, Dayton's rural feel to it, right? It's a very challenging site. Traffic access, I echo what Peter's saying, like, we've seen a number of different developments. This intersection with territorial is really bad. It's putting a lot of people on that intersection too, so. And I know we're hamstringing because we can't really connect into eighty-one there in addition, so it's, it's just a tough property. But I know some of the other layouts that we've seen have more kind of like, you know, L-shaped buildings or something that start to kind of subdivide the, the space and create little, you know, break down the space a little bit more and give different view sheds and stuff like that. But I'm not a big fan of just long linear things. I feel like that's just unnatural and, does, I mean, I don't know.
That, that brings up a good point. I mean, in our residential code, we have, for builders like Lennar or Polte, we have an anti-monotony code, and that's something we should consider with, with units like this as well. I mean, to help break it up a little bit.
Yeah, we're not very good at executing that with those builders, but.
This is a hard site too, because it's just big.
Yeah.
And so, and that's where I think, i- if you guys could, are willing to go back to the drawing board, I really do think splitting it into townhomes and apartments to get your density is going to create a, a nice desirable product, instead of all the same product Especially if you're doing tuck-under garages, the townhomes are your, your tuck-under or attached garage product, no. I mean, I'd rather see them than tuck-under garages, because same thing with my experience with tuck-under garage buildings and walking through them after thirty years, it's just not as, not as, not as good a product to, to want to own either, if you're gonna be still owning it.
Well, by providing some changes in plane or angles in the buildings or something provides like opportunities to change the materials more naturally. When you have a long straight stretch of facade, I mean, these townhouses just down the street and I've seen in other communities with these townhouses, you're painting with materials on the same plane, and it's just very random and, you know, like materials want to change at inside corners and, you know, at, at natural places, not just like one material comes and no one stops and starts in the same, like it just, it just feels fake and like you're just painting, you know, like trying to find all the materials in your basket and throwing them up on the wall, right? And so providing some relief in your buildings and, and jogs in the buildings while, may cost us a little bit more, provides opportunities architecturally to make the buildings more interesting, because you can have thoughtful ways to use materials and make them look a little different as they transition from one side of a building to another and maybe give them a little bit of character too, so then you're not just looking, I mean, you drive down this main drive and it's three buildings of just garage doors and two stories of apartments above, then I don't know how you figure out which one's yours, you know? So just some, something to bring a little character to it. Again, I understand cost is a big thing and it's a challenging site, so I try to challenge you a little bit more.
You know, one thing with the long drive aisles, I'm still in this, I'm a ex-plan and commission, that's a member that's no longer here, but when you have those long drive aisles too, that are perfectly straight, it provides people the ability to go faster and faster and faster.
Oh, so now you want to slow people down?
What's that?
You want to slow people down.
I do want to slow people down here, inside the development. So that's just something to keep in mind too, and I, it makes sense. I mean, I don't know if you guys got other developments that have that long of winter stretches, but you know, if you came forward with, and stick with a plan like that, that'd be good, to have some information of, yeah, it's not a concern, or you're right, we changed it a little bit.
Ryan, you got anything?
No, I don't think so. I think most of the, most of the major challenges I saw were gonna come with just the, the traffic flow in and out. I think we've kind of dealt with what we can there, and we'll have to see what comes of that piece. Outside of that, just seeing what kind of flexibility it would be to deal with some of the, the internal movement concerns, just for emergency vehicle access and just kind of dealing with that, that parking arrangement better, otherwise I think that.
Yeah, I'd love to see you guys continue working on the site with staff. And even with that north access road, whether it is where they have it or where Peter was suggesting maybe on the other side, but that's another opportunity, how to tie that townhome development in and connect up, because that road through the townhome is going to be more of a street type of road than a, usually anyway.
Am I okay to respond to some things?
Sure.
I didn't want to interrupt or want to follow decorum. Am I good to just, okay, great. I was taking a list here, so I've been listening and taking notes. I can't obviously fix everything with the comments I'm gonna make, but I just wanted to offer them so you at least have a little bit of perspective of where we came from, especially on the overall design, parking garages, where, why they're located where they are. Oftentimes, what, you know, you, when you're laying out a site, you're challenged, especially if you have detached garages of, you don't want to put those on the outside of the site and have the public looking at garages. You want to screen those to the best of your ability. That way anybody, anybody driving past the site, the look and feel from anybody looking at it from the public perspective doesn't see any garages, or at least very little garages. And that's the design intent here, is that if you're wa, driving by the site, you're walking around the site, you're on the trailer, you don't even see garages. And like, we had mentioned the outside units, they're walkout units, the inside is where the parking is. So it just wants to be where we had that intent in mind. The intent was to make a better product for the community and have a longer-term quality from that perspective. I recognize, you know, that doesn't solve everything. The other item I wanted to mention is that the buildings, we definitely don't, we're not gonna have smooth-faced buildings. We would intend to have jog-in, jog-out in the building with materials that break it up, dormers that break up the roof lines. We're not, you know, we're not cheap-cheap type developer, and I hope you can look at our website and see what we do. We're not, we don't, we don't believe in that either. Enclave is a long-term holder of every project that we do, we're the investor, property manager. We have a long-term vested interest in doing something that's high-quality and something that's gonna be good not now, but into the future, and to maintain it well, build it well, connect all the dots. So we're not build it, flip it, leave it, someone else manages it. So we would intend to, you know, take, take good care of the product, but again, that doesn't necessarily fix everything that you'd mentioned. And then lastly, on the, what would be helpful for us on this additional access point? I guess just first, you know, from our perspective, we're not looking for a second access, we're gonna follow the guidance that we're given. So, I mean, that, but I just want the group to know that we're, we're not searching for a second access point. We feel okay with just territorial. Additionally, if we are adding that second access point to the nor, far northwest corner of the site, I am interested, are we talking about a full public road, public, you know, like essentially the public could turn right-in, right-out from that and go up to the new Parkway connection that you'd mentioned? Or is it just meant to be like an internal driveway for our apartment building use only? What, I'm curious, because that changes the amount of right-of-way that you dedicate and what type of role and setbacks, and it just, two different animals in my viewpoint.
So the one, at least staff's comments were the, I'm gonna call them by the numbers on the diagram, but B, so the one on County Road eighty-one, moving to the north, is a right-in, right-out full public access, the one out to County Road eighty-one. C, which is the one, the future backup access to one-hundred-and-thirteenth and Dayton Parkway, staff's discussed it and we don't have, our initial recommendation was that that would remain a emergency access route and not a public access route, so something for an emergency services only, not a, no industrial users from the one-hundred-and-thirteenth would come down that access. And then if, you know, at some point in the future, that became a full access, then we would not have an access on County Road eighty-one. But at this time, it would just be a maintained for a future emergency access.
Is the access on eighty-one emergency only too, I thought?
It's shown on the plan as, as emergency only. Staff's recommendation is that it become a full right-in, right-out access for all vehicle users.
Is the county on board with that, you think?
The county supports the right-in, right-out, but they're, have not support, they're, I should say, Jason, the city engineer, has talked to the county and they've initially, you know, had positive feedback on the right-in, right-out, not so much on the three-quarter.
I, I do want to clarify, letter C, so the idea would be, could be emergency access for now, but then long-term, we look at it to be, at the location it's at currently would be a private drive for the access for those individuals only. We would not want it to be a cut-through.
It'd be a public street up there that turns into the pri, private driveway.
Correct, exactly. So it'd be a private driveway entrance if the county would take away the access point from County Road eighty-one. It's, it's more of a backup for the fact that we're not sure what the county's gonna do with County Road eighty-one, and we would prefer to have two access points at all times onto this property with the type of use that it is versus having just one. I know that the applicant says they're comfortable with one access, but city staff and engineers and planners alike, we all kind of think we'd need at least two access points just for traffic flows and, and once they're fully up and running, it's a lot of people trying to go in and out at one time.
For public safety too.
Correct, yep. And again, public safety as well, so. The C is a backup for us at this point. At the current location it's at, it would just be a private drive. If it was something more where we're moving it further to the east and it's something that would be able to be utilized as more of a cut-through and kind of a side-swiping action of the overall layout, it could become a public roadway as a access point to one-thirteenth or, or beyond. But at the location it's at currently, that gets proposed would be a private drive at most. So that would tell you how much right-of-way is needed and stuff, it would be much less than a public roadway.
If I may just follow up on that, or clarify for myself, if I'm looking at this map correctly, B is supposed, that would be a public right-in, right-out, public road, public standards, but it's proposed to be moved to the west there, right? Am I?
Correct, yeah, to increase the separation from territorial.
Okay, so B will be moved to the west where the far-left green is.
Correct.
So we will, the throat of that coming from the county road dumping into the site will be public, and then it's gonna change from a public road to a private drive going north to the yellow. Is that?
No. No, so, so C would be, you would design the site so that C could be accommodated in the future, and if the green B goes away, whichever one it is, C could then be opened up as your secondary access point if, if B were to go away.
But B is not a, to clarify, B is not for, not. But B is not, to clarify, B is not for, not intended for traffic not associated with apartments. So if someone going to somewhere else not apartments, wouldn't be necessarily utilizing B as a public street. There's no right of way dedicated through your site for the, the parking. It'd be to access on and off the county road for people that are dwelling in one of the 363 units.
This is essentially private.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
The idea is that B and C would never exist at the same time because if they did, there would be cut through access.
Correct. Yeah. B and C would never exist at the same time. B would be constructed at the first recommendation, but we want to have the ability to have C if the county were to take away that access point based on their guidelines. We want to have another secondary access. So they would never exist together. You are correct.
Right.
You wouldn't be cutting through from B to C.
Correct. Yeah. Correct.
Other people might have different opinions, but my take on it is get the B in the plan. C, as an applicant, I think we're asking them too much to plan around something the county may or may not do. And if the county does it, the county has to pay for it. It's the reality. And meaning, we don't even control a road where C would be coming through right now.
And that's, that's where I...
It's a private property.
That's where my recommendation would actually be to widen out between the, the two properties or the two buildings that V together. And, and then you could have it go anywhere up in the northeast side. You could have that, that drive access go anywhere up in that northeast side. You don't have to be locked into a specific location on the parcel north of you. And that would allow, it would allow for, as long as you're planning around a potential for a future road to go between those two buildings, it would allow for it to happen if, if everything else were aligned as well.
And I think from the city's perspective, like Peter said, it's going to be easier because those properties in the northeast corner someday are going to be plotted to something else that we can easily or get a road in there if we need to.
Right. Yeah. And this is based on early conversation or staff review from an early perspective, but conversations would have to be had with the property owners to determine where that would likely fall. So it is at this point rough from the city engineer.
And you know, you may not know this Patrick, but right before this meeting, we talked about where Dayton's city center is going to be. If that road ever did go northeast to there, it's a feeder for that project into the Dayton city center where there's going to be a little more commercial and more stuff for all your residents. So there would be some benefit to you if that road ever came through for your residents.
C?
C.
You talking about C?
Yeah.
C in the northeast corner, not C current.
Yeah.
Yeah. As the, as the thing sits out here today, it's kind of kiddy wampus, but the left, the current yellow or C sitting in the northwest corner. So if anybody's looking at the map going, what do you mean northeast? Yeah, that's yellow. That's the northwest corner of the property currently. So it would be opposite corner they were looking at.
I appreciate whoever labeled the map with letters for each access point, cause this could have been really difficult.
You can thank Jason, the city engineer for that one.
Okay.
I guess the access from this development onto territorial and the new territorial connection, is that just in here, is that just concept? That's not design?
I don't believe any design's been done for it. It's anticipated that that's the method it would take. I mean, the, the connection from where territorial connects into County Road 81 is pretty much set because we have existed.
We have that right of way. Yep. That pork chop there confuses me.
I don't, that's not, that's a conceptual, how the access could be split between the development and territorial and hasn't been designed from an engineering standpoint.
Yeah. It just confuses me with using this on a regular, this intersection on a regular basis and, and dealing with roadways professionally. It confuses me looking at it. So concept wise, I'm fine with it.
Is it a preference to do something different?
I didn't see all the lanes I figured coming.
So one of the, yeah, one of the challenges, Peter, when you look at this is that the new alignments over here. It's, oh, we're pulling it through here. Got it. We're pulling it through because the city of New Orleans is junk.
Yeah. We acquired right of way during the territorial comments.
The city owns this junk.
Development.
And this junk. Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Got it. Now it makes more sense now that I know the map.
Yeah. But it's not shown that way up there. It's shown as a parcel up there.
Yep.
So basically I'd rather see it as a T into territorial than the pork chop. I guess to answer your question.
Do you have like a traffic signal there or just?
I'd, it'd probably be a.
Turning lanes.
Turning lanes. It'd probably be a yield with turning lanes or a, I don't even know if you'd need turning lanes coming out of this development, to be honest.
Not coming out, going in.
Or maybe not. You might need a left going in on territorial going into the development.
And that, the reason why the right and right out was requested from us is that if people are coming from Apple Grove area, they'd need another access point if there was backup trying to get, taking a left into the, you know, into the site. We'd want to have that right in, right out to be able to basically bypass the intersection, go to the exit and take a right in to the development.
Yeah, the right in, right out up here.
If, let's just say everyone is backed up trying to get onto 81 coming would be from the east to west. Everyone's backed up, you can no longer take a left into the site if there was cars stacked up there. So the ability that those cars could then bypass the intersection and then take a right into the, to the development would be ideal. And that's why the right in, right out was requested, just because of stacking purposes on the territorial.
And that would obviously require a turning lane.
Correct. Exactly.
I'm careful, Ryan, probably got bronze statue over in the middle for helping to solve this intersection. No?
I'm not going to solve it. It's not my forte. All right. Any other comments for the applicant? This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:30 and see if there's any more comments. Thank you.
No.
Anyone here for public comment? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And that was a concept plan, so we don't need any action.
Correct.
Move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The, I'm going to grab. So before we tonight, there's an application by Opus Development Company LLC for an administrative subdivision rezoning and site plan review and listed as a public hearing. On this item, I did not prepare a PowerPoint because the applicant has requested to table the items at the next planning commission meeting as following the public hearing. They were made aware of some stormwater issues on the site that are proving to be something that they want to work through before they come back before you as they are not sure if it's going to have site plan changes significant enough to change locations of parking and such. So they want to have a competent plan in front of you. So they're working with the city engineer to address those comments. So they have requested tabling this item to the October planning commission meeting.
With that, we can table the public hearing?
Uh, procedurally, we would open the public hearing and then table, continue the public hearing by tabling the item. And then that public hearing would remain open until the next agenda or next meeting in October.
All right. I guess with that, we will open the public hearing.
How about the public?
Correct. Yep. The applicant or the applicant's engineer, who is the representative on this one?
I'll make a motion to table this agenda item till October, planning commission meeting.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four, nothing. Those will move to October 5th.
Yeah, that will be on the.
I believe it's the 5th. It's what the calendar says on the wall. So.
Oh, you're probably correct. Yeah.
Your agenda almost.
Correct. October 5th would be the, the next meeting that that would be at.
All right. Moving right along. I should have checked, John. Was there anyone online?
Not for that. Thanks for asking.
I should have checked before.
Sorry, this mouse is a little.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Tonight before you, excuse me, we have an application for an IUP for a home extended business for outdoor and indoor storage for the property located at 1304 Zanzibar Lane North. The current land use is agricultural, A1. Property is guided towards low density residential in our 2040 comp plan and the property is in the post 2050 staging area. This property is approximately 32.67 acres, surrounded by three parks or Three Rivers Parks District and approximately over 2,000 acres of farmland. The property has large flood plain on it. Approximately 20.22 acres are within the flood plain. There also is an impaired stream, which is Diamond Creek that runs through it. And the wetland classification for this wetlands on the property is a managed two, which requires a minimum of 25 foot setback to 35 feet. So you can see right here on the site location in the yellow is that management classification area, which goes pretty close to the buildings. In the second picture is where they're proposing to put outdoor storage. And you can see that the flood plain goes all the way through here to the back of the buildings. I believe the property owners, Joanne and Greg Heinen are on Zoom. The applicant is their son Noah. I'm not sure if he is on, he is on Zoom, Zoom as well. The, the Heinen's purchased this property in 2009. At that time, this property was already being used for indoor and outdoor storage. On here I said, which was non-conforming use. It actually was a use that, an allowable use. It just did not have an IUP. Currently they have two employees, which are Joanna and Greg Heinen. Joanna does the administrative work and Greg kind of manages, performs the maintenance. In our code, it restricts her an IUP for at least, or to eight trips per day going into a, into a property. Right now, the vehicle trips that they propose or what they're thinking they'll have is up to three customers will visit the day, the site on any given day, depending on the time of the year. They want to store recreational vehicles and other vehicles on the property. They would use outdoor storage as well as indoor storage. On here, I, they had currently, or have eight, or excuse me, six outbuildings and one silo. Joanna had actually emailed me and stated there's five outbuildings. I don't know if you can see this one very well on here. There's a building right here that has a little bit of a opening between it. And then there's another building on there. So I counted that as a separate building is how I came up with the six. Currently in our code for outdoor storage, or excuse me, indoor storage, we only allow one building. So we did go onsite and met with the applicants and they are going to, they're proposing to use just one building, which would be, you can't really see it, but in this top picture here's a part of the building. It's one of the larger buildings on the site. This, if the, the terms for an interim use for approval, it requires the city council to find that all the conditions have been met and you can read through all the conditions and you can see that they can meet all of these requirements. The role of planning commission is to review the application against the recent home occupation ordinance, which I have attached in your packet and determine any revisions and make recommendations to the council. The planning commission has the following options. They can consider recommending support for the extended home business with additional conditions that staff has put on there and add it to the resolution, or they can consider recommending denial for the extended home business with findings related to the denial. Otherwise, they can table the item with the direction of staff, to, and direction staff to find additional information. Staff feels that based on the current home occupation ordinance, that the applicant is currently operating beyond what is established as guidelines and because they're operating without an IUP, indoor storage exceeds the one accessory building. And currently, which they are in the process of changing, is they're operating on one of the buildings, the large building that they'd like to use for indoor storage is a repair shop for semis. That, that renter is on the process of moving out. And then there's a landscaping business in one of the other buildings, which is not allowed on the property and they're also in the process of moving out. You can see the, the recreational vehicles that as it's defined by the Minnesota model flood plain ordinance is, sorry, let me, is, just want to open this up for you and show you what is actually defined as a, so let me click on it. A recreational vehicle definition isn't like four wheelers, things like that. It's a, a vehicle that is built on a single chassis, 400 square feet or less when measured at the largest horizontal projection, is designed to be self-propelled and permanently towable by a light duty truck and designed primarily not for the use as a permanent dwelling, but as a temporary living quarters. So basically it's more of a camper type that for a recreational vehicle. The applicant did indicate they wanted to store semis on the site. However, that is not allowed in that area. Let me go back to We did do a site visit at the end of August. They were in, they had zoning violations for all their exterior storage that was outside and applicants have done an excellent job of cleaning up the site. The only thing I believe that's left is right here, there are three semis trailers. One of them is kind of buried, so they would have to get some type of crane or something to help get that out. But the applicant, or the homeowner said they would be doing that. They also have one of their buildings, they have a tenant who repairs cars and I believe he is in the process of moving his stuff out as well. But they have done a really good job of cleaning up the whole site. But staff, with the recommendations that staff has, we would limit any type of trailers, opened or closed to 28 feet because of the circulation going around if that, we felt that that was about as large as it could handle to be backing in a trailer and backing up for the space that they had. The part of the DNR and that requires a plan or this, the, excuse me, the flood plain requires a plan showing that the applicant has to provide of what would require the rem... requires a plan showing, that the applicant has to provide of what would require the removal of the vehicles, what type of, you know, whether it was a heavy storm or anything like that, where they would move the vehicles to, and how long it would take them. We have not received that back from the applicants yet. They would have to maintain a 25-foot setback from Diamond Lake Creek. They would not be able to have anything that is considered a pollutant or injurious to plants, animals, or people, which includes cars or anything with fuel below the base flood elevation in that particular area. They have not done base flood elevation, so the applicant would have a choice of keeping everything out of that flood zone, or hiring an engineer to determine the elevations. There can be no repair work done on the vehicles onsite. The trips would be limited to eight trips per day, no more than 20 minutes to bring the vehicles in and out. Only one accessory building would be used. The outdoor storage would be limited to the impervious area indicated on the map. The applicants, or the homeowners, are actually at their maximum impervious, so they would not be able to bring in any more gravel or expand. They might also be encroaching into that 25-foot setback with impervious. Outparking should be onsite. There should be no overnight parking in the parking area. The applicants would like their business from 8:00 AM, they're currently running it 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. Staff felt that was acceptable. Screening shall be installed with a minimum of 50% opacity year-round. They did have an eight-foot fence that was metal that was up on the property, which was against the city code, so they have taken that down. They left the posts up. City code requires that along the front of the building, or what abouts a street or right-of-way, can only be four feet high, and then the rest along the side could be six feet high. The back of the property and the other side, there are large trees, so they're basically shielded from any adjoining properties. A home extended business, IUP, is valid for a period of five years from the date of the resolution. The applicant must record the IUP resolution with Hennepin County and provide the city with a copy of that. Another thing that staff didn't put on here is that we would like an annual inspection. We'd start, now that we have staff, we'd start to, like on our IUPs, CUPs, we do an annual compliance inspection. And then also, the fire department would like to go through the building and make sure that it meets fire code. And number 21, the Hennepin County's tax assessor, we could take that one off. That's actually the city's responsibility to do that. So I do have, like I said, the owners of the property and the applicant are online, if you have any questions for them.
One quick question I have is just, can we verify again where specifically they're requesting the outdoor storage?
Where they are?
Is it just between those two buildings?
Well, when we went out onsite, they did indicate it was going to be a little bit more, but on their plan in your packet, they had said right in here was going to be the outdoor storage. But the floodplain comes in about right here to this building and goes back. So if they, they are allowed to store recreational vehicles in this area, however, they have to come up with a plan on how fast, how long it'll take them to get out of there, where they'll move those vehicles to. The owners also stated they thought they'd approximately have 100 vehicles at any one time there, but staff was kind of calculating in the comments that we got, that we didn't think that there could be more than 50.
Based upon the area that they're working with?
Correct.
To maintain some drive aisles and?
Correct, and to have the circulation around. This, there's, the applicant's house is here, and then this storage building is his personal storage building. So it doesn't have, I believe it's this one, or that must be, I think that's one of the cars. I think it's this one back here that is his. But this one right here is a large one that the semis are in right now, that they're clearing out, and that would probably be the one that they want to utilize. The people that are currently in these ones are ones that were there when they purchased the property. They still have just stayed on the property when the Heinen's purchased it. This building right here is where the landscaping company was, and they have moved their stuff out. And then they'll have their parking right here. But they have a fence post that go all the way down here, and they had a six-foot fence that went across here and here on the property. But they'd only be allowed to have a four-foot fence in the front. If they moved it back, you know, to here, like even with this building, it could be six. Did you have any questions for staff or for the applicant at all, or the homeowners?
So staff recommended, or at least per the ordinance, that this is supposed to go for five years, but the applicant recommended, or the applicant submitted that they wouldn't wanted it indefinitely.
Correct.
Staff's recommendation is still to stay with the five years on the IUP and require that they re-up that every five years. Was that discussed with the applicant at all, and what their opinion was?
We haven't discussed that with the applicant, but yes, it's in the 2050 staging plan, so we don't see, there's not going to be water and sewer or anything planned for this area, so if they did renew it every five years, staff was okay with that.
Yeah, I didn't see a problem with the doing it every five years. I guess the issue would be going with it indefinitely, especially considering we're starting to put a lot of focus into the area that's going to drive right up and down this as being a new primary north-south corridor for the city too, so we want to be really considerate of not just the fact that it's not going to be developable or changeable for till 2050 plus. That could change in the interim as well, but we're going to be driving a lot of our kind of core traffic up and down that corridor as well, so just being mindful of what we're putting up and down alongside there.
And it would, another thing that would, if the property was to sell, that IUP then would then become invalid or void, it doesn't, would transfer to the next property owner.
So they've also mentioned too, that they've got a few different businesses or whatever operating in some of these other, these other units. Is the intention for any of those to remain?
No.
For the long term, or are all those businesses vacating? And do they have plans for the remainder of those buildings? If we only permit that they use one for the business use going forward, are the rest of those just going to be vacant?
Well, they would like to use more than one for the indoor storage, but the semi-truck driver, he has came in, he is moving his business. Right now, he has taken all the stuff out of the building because he's going through it, sorting, so we gave him till the end of September to do that, but the landscaping business also is relocating.
I guess it was more our guidance from the staff side that they recommend that we keep it at the one building use.
Correct.
So if we, if we do that, does that, does that prevent the applicant from accomplishing what they're trying to do with the business on the property? And again, does it, does it leave four or five just vacant structures on the property since we've kind of restrained, or do we limit those to just personal use of the property owner at that point then? Is that what it kind of falls back to?
Right, you could, to personal use, but.
Good question for the applicant.
I figured they're online, they're probably listed right now, so they'll get a chance to, to bring that up.
I'd just be curious too, from the applicant, I mean, there's 21 conditions. You know, that's a lot, like, how do they feel about that? Do they have concerns about any of them? That kind of just general question.
Yeah, I don't, I think I don't have anything else to mute here, so I'd be interested in hearing their feedback on that too, of the list of conditions and how that's going to impact their ability to move forward with this, if they have to comply with all of those.
I guess we should ask.
I was just going to say, reading through the conditions, I think they need to apply with all of them. I'll just say it now before they even talk, because, given the history on the site, I mean, it's why they're in front of us, given the history on the site.
Yeah, that's fair. I'm just curious to see what their thoughts are.
And again, it's going to be a highly visible corner for the city going forward too, so I mean, that's.
It's now paved, so people, I don't know if more people are using it, but.
Oh, they are.
I used it.
I guess that, with that, we should.
Open up to.
Request the applicant to, to speak.
Okay. Noah, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
Yep. Hi, everyone.
May have to talk a little louder.
Sorry for being silent for so long. Yeah, so all the, we were just trying to comply with all the things that were listed, and that's, we understand that we caused a ruckus, and we're trying to, I don't know, not cause any issues moving forward.
As far as the conditions that were on there, can you hear me? This is Joanna.
Yep.
Yep.
As far as the conditions, they all seem very doable. We were, and it's, it's no problem giving you a plan for how to move things in the event of a floodplain issue, that would simply be moving them from the back where they're stored up to the parking area, which would be vacant. There's nobody that ever parks in the area that's marked parking on there, so that would be all of about a 30-minute deal, I think, to move anything that was in danger of flooding. As far as the, the only issue on any of the conditions would be the 28-foot length of items. In the history of the 20 years that it's been using for campers, there's been a greater need, I think, with the citizens of Dayton to need storage for their larger items, which are not allowed in their driveways. I think 33 feet is a really common length for a lot of campers, recreational vehicles that people currently have, and it's never been a problem to back them out, to move them around. It's actually a farm, and it was built with the purpose of moving large grain trucks around all the buildings in a circular motion, getting to the silos. There used to be five silos, there are now three. Not an issue moving things around. There's very easy flow throughout the buildings, around the buildings. There's not a situation where anyone has to back up or do a U-turn or anything like that, so I don't think the 28-foot restriction is really a necessary one, and I think it does a disservice to the citizens of Dayton who would like to, we've had a lot of, for many, many decades, people in Dayton have been parking their campers here in the off-season, and when they're not using them in boats and things, and the length has never been an issue. So I guess that's the only one who would, that, that I would request a change to.
And just to clarify, and I think the intent was, the 28 feet was for trailers, not RVs.
If that's okay.
Oh, I see.
Most of the typical trailers tend to be 48 and 52, so as long as we stay away from that 48, but we'll probably still be well below the limit of what normal trailers would be.
The 28 feet we found was, like, if you had, and I don't know what the correct verbiage is, but essentially like a double semi-trailer would be two 28 foot.
Oh, okay. So if we're talking about a boat on a trailer that's longer, that's all right?
Yeah, I guess from.
I mean, my, my boat on my trailer, I have a 20-foot boat, and it's like 28 feet long as the trailer.
Yeah.
And so if you had a 30-foot boat, figure you'd be 37 feet.
Yeah. My old man's in his RV, and that's 33 feet, so I mean, I know he wouldn't be able to park on the property as it stands right now. So I mean, I see, I don't, I don't see an issue with a little bit of flexibility as long as it doesn't cause logistics issues on the site.
If we rephrase that to like a 28-foot box trailer.
Oh, gotcha. That's fine.
I guess, I, I mean, the way I look at, at the condition of the 28-foot length, and this is, this is me, does it impact the public right-of-way, in or out? And if it doesn't, we shouldn't dictate how long anything should be. That's their operation on their site with their tenants who are renting. So that, to me, I have no issue without, unless it impacts the way people are turning off and on Zanzibar or on and off our own roads in Dayton.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect that at all. I mean, they can go in and do a full circle, moving forward the entire time and never have to, no. It wouldn't affect Zanzibar at all because everything is taking place mostly between or behind the buildings, so I don't think it would cause an issue out on Zanzibar in the least.
I don't think it would cause an issue. I guess my only concern, and obviously this isn't your intention, but, you know, if there was, you know, semi-truck trailers parked there all of a sudden, and a bunch of them overnight for a long period of time, that's, I think, you know, it's just a different, I mean, and part of this gets back into, we haven't even talked to some of the screening ideas that we might have, so.
Sure.
But getting a 40-foot, I mean, drivers can do a lot of things with trailers that are good.
Good drivers.
Good drivers can.
The IUP also says it's primarily for storing recreational vehicles. I don't know that a trailer really qualifies necessarily. I mean, if we're talking an enclosed trailer or something like that, like, you know, semi-worthy trailer, I don't know if that would really qualify as recreational vehicle, so as long as we're strict about that piece.
Okay, our primary customer base is boats and campers and RVs.
Well, we have had quite a few, sorry, this is Greg Heinen. We've had quite a few guys that have come over that, one of them, it's a 50-foot bus essentially, and he's, he actually, his business is out of Dayton, so he has to store there every once in a while. So it's, it's a pretty big bus, but, you know, again, it goes in and out easily. And we've got a guy that has a race trailer that's huge. It's like 14 feet tall. I think it's a solid 45 feet, and he's pulled with a semi, but it's literally, you know, it's his race trailer, he's got a car lower, a car upper, and he's got living quarters in the front, so I don't, I don't know what the limitation with the trailer thing, I get it, you don't want a semi-parking lot thing, like, you know, like what was going on with our previous tenant, but, I mean, if the guys are going, it's like we were talking about, Zach, at the, at the meeting on site is, there's, you know, as long as the vehicle is, as per code, as long as the vehicle is licensed for road use, it's not, you know, something that someone's just dropping off and leaving, and it's literally just for storage on the site, that's totally different, I get that. But as long as it can be removed from the property and trailerable and is roadworthy, I, I don't, I guess I kind of, I don't want to limit what we're doing. You know, I try to be as open as possible for, and accommodating for people that want to store stuff, so, you know, and as far as the, the site itself, it's, I mean, you can get in and out of there with anything, literally anything, you know. If a semi can get in there, anything else can get in there too, so. And one of the things we're going to do too is, I do a lot of construction stuff on new sites, and, and one of the, I think the biggest complaints of this city, or, and this hasn't been brought up yet, but what we're going to do is asphalt the entranceway back probably 30, 40 feet, so you don't get some of the granular fill, or some of the granular products, rock, whatever from, you know, our, our base level material from either damaging the road going in, you know, Zanzibar itself, and just, you know, just keeping everything clean going in and out of the, of the site.
Mr. Chair, the, the ordinance does limit it to one vehicle, no, no vehicles are more than 12,000 pounds, gross pounds, you know, so that, that, essentially the bus cannot be there. The intent of the conditions, you know, in speaking that a box trailer or semi-trailer would not be allowed there, would also prohibit the racecar trailer.
Sure, and planning, the intent of it was to not have a semi-trailer parking lot, that was essentially the reason for the condition. It can be amended at whatever time, but that was the reason for the condition. It wasn't to limit the fact that we don't want to have a 30-foot boat there. That's not the reason for the condition. Thank you.
So for, for the applicant again, did you guys have any comments at all about the restriction of the IUP down to just five-year terms rather than indefinitely as you guys originally proposed? And along with that, did you guys, did you guys have any comments at all about the requirement to use one building as opposed to using the remainder of the buildings on the property, just so we can kind of clarify your, your stance on those two pieces?
I, I think we would like to use more than one building, and I don't know the process for, what is the process for getting allowance for that? We do personal things out of one or two of them, but the other ones are just going to be sitting vacant otherwise.
So, Mr. Chair, within the ordinance or the for home extended businesses, I mean, the restrictions are pretty heavy. It does give the building, or the council the ability of allowing, being more lenient, I guess, I would say, or allowing things that go above and beyond what the code has for everything else. So everything's a little unique. You know, this, the general ten of home business is that it's a home first and a business second. This property has a lot of history that predates the current owner. I mean, this has been used for storage for, you know, long before the, the current owners owned that, so being that it's predominantly not a farm, or operated as a farm, or at least the buildings are not. are not, I think it's reasonable to allow this use at this location, whereas you would not necessarily allow a new use somewhere else.
And then any comments at all about the, the five-year term? Is that gonna be, is that gonna be an issue at all or a challenge for you guys to have to contend with the five-year limit on the IUP?
I don't think that's gonna be a problem at all. That just means in five years, we go through this process again that we're doing right now?
Essentially, yeah.
There's a lot of head.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that would, I don't think that'll be an issue for us.
I would be in support of opening things up a little bit. I mean, if the concern is semi-trailer parking, you know, it's, it's existing condition, I'd rather see storage in buildings than outside of buildings in general, and I know not all the RVs are gonna fit in there, but there's, I don't see harm in two buildings or three buildings being used for indoor storage if one is already being used, as long as trips are not skyrocketing to the point where it's an inconvenience to the neighborhood, in which there's not a lot of neighborhood in the area. I believe we have one, I believe we have one resident that's across the street, and two residents, so you'll have a chance to talk.
I think as long, as long as we, as long as the city's got strong language in there that we've got the right to go in and do inspections on our schedule. Again, the applicant says they seem to be okay with it by appointment. So as long as we're able to go in there and do the inspections, we need to just verify compliance going forward with the, with the, you know, loosened restrictions. I think that's, that covers most of our bases on that piece.
I guess the, the other one that I, maybe it's more towards staff, but the requirement of the six-foot fence on, or four-foot fence on the right-of-way versus the six-foot. And it's, it's designed that way to not have a, a tall fence on someone's right, on the right-of-way to avoid sightlines and stuff like that, correct?
Yes, this is the fence code.
Yes. And so the issue with the six-foot fence along that side.
It would need a variance.
It would need a variance or.
Or the council to change it.
Or a code amendment, I guess.
With this IUP, can we?
Can we add it as?
Can we add as part of the IUP conditions? Like, I, I'd like everyone's feedback, but I kind of care a little bit about the placement of the fence. I don't want it on the right-of-way. I want, if we're only, if this, if it's gonna be between these buildings, it looks like they got plenty of ways to access between these buildings, and they can even put a gate on the east side. I'd like that fence going from one building, like squaring off.
Like here.
And so it's more, a little bit more natural, and it's not, you know, it just, everything's covered up better. And quite frankly, six feet seems better than four feet if that was the case. Now, if it was right on the right-of-way, different, different story case.
What are we really hiding, though? I mean, there are huge RVs, right? And you're only covering the bottom.
It's better than the other alternative.
I think if you were to, if you were to drive out there and you were to at least look at the fence from your vehicle as you're driving by, a six-foot high, you're seeing less of the RV, you're, you're looking up, you're, you're just seeing the tops of them or.
Yeah, you see the front one, not all the ones behind.
And you're not seeing, you're not seeing in.
Boats.
Well, you're not seeing the, the, I'm not, I'm gonna call it debris, but, you know, if there's weeds and stuff growing up underneath the RVs or whatever else in the, in the pathway, you're not seeing that kind of stuff if there's no fence.
I'd go from building to silo with a long sliding gate to allow proper turning and access, but I wouldn't put it up in the front. It's just.
That's kind of where I was referring to, right where you said. What is the wall height on these buildings-ish? Do we know?
Greg or Joanna?
Yeah, the, the wall height on, if you look at the one, if we were looking at the same screen, I guess, the building that says it's 54 by 100, the wall height next to the ball field.
This one.
I believe is about 14 feet tall. So even a six-foot-high fence, I proposed a couple options, and Tori came up, I think this, well, multiple people in the city came up with the mesh screening, like you'd see in a, like a tennis court or something, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that. We were, we were proposing as more of a, more of a vegetative-type fence with vines or something, but we didn't get approved for that, which is, you know, I'd still like to maybe possibly discuss that, I don't know. But the, most of the buildings are at an elevated position anyway, so that building that's next to the ball field is slightly elevated. The building to the, to the, it would be to your right, yeah, that one with the cursor on it, that's 100 by 60. That one is the tallest building, so the interior, or the exterior wall height is 16 feet. And that can be, you know, that's taller than anything. The other two that are, that are towards the front, closer to Zanzibar, those, yeah, the one with the cursor's on, those are about, they're a little bit shorter, but they, those are about two feet higher just because of their position on the land, because that, that entranceway on the, on the left side. So that's about two feet higher. So they're almost like the, the building next to the ball field and the ones next to the silo are roughly the same height, more or less. And then the, the ones towards the back that says 55 by 40 and 15 by 55, those are a little bit shorter. Those would be closer to the size of the ones by the silo. But they're all, I mean, everything's, if you put a six-foot-tall fence up, you're gonna still see a building. You know, there's no, you're not gonna hide any building at all. You're still gonna see the buildings easily.
That was a question for you guys up here too, is that if you do push the fence back from the right-of-way with the IUP, is maybe a taller fence appropriate, like an eight-footer?
If, I mean, they did have an eight-foot fence previously, the metal one.
But that was pretty close to the right-of-way.
Along this way, yes, and in the front, but you still can see over, see the buildings over it when you're coming.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to hide all the buildings, I'm just.
Right.
And even if people are storing stuff, it gives them, you'd rather have that there so people don't see what's always there for security.
Right. But also, according to the police chief, and that they want to be able to see in there to, so that somebody's not in there.
But we're entitled to do inspections when we want, right?
Right. But I mean, if somebody tries to break in, they want to be able to have some type of visibility in there to the police when they go by, so that nobody's breaking into anything there, trying to steal it. That's why they preferred staff, and we talked to with a 50% opacity. But it has to be year-round.
And this is just my opinion, but that seems more the responsibility of the property owner and the business they're operating than the city's responsibility. I mean, I don't know if others share my opinion, but that's just my take on it.
Yeah, and one of the things we, we, the reason we did the metal fence is because it does complement what's already there. But I understand that's, it's not the code, and there was a misunderstanding of the previous city planner, or the person we talked to before, about the, how, what, what we could do and the materials, location, all that stuff. And that, I mean, that's primarily why we did a metal fence, is because it looks more like a barn, and it goes with the area. It's a little, I prefer, you know, we've already got cameras all over on the site. We've actually got a really pretty amazing camera on, on location that you can see everything all the time, and it's, it's motion-sensitive. It's, it's everything. It's pretty amazing for what you get for, for the cameras nowadays. But, I mean, we, we'd, we'd rather have, and this is my position mostly, is I'd rather not burden the police department at all. And I've mentioned this before, I've never called, I never called the police department for any reason whatsoever unless it's, it had to be pretty severe. I don't even remember when the last time I've had to call the police. But that's, that's the whole point, is me, me taking responsibility for what I have around the site. That's, that's what we're trying to do, not, you know, if I can keep everybody out, or people from looking in at all, and saying, okay, there's a, say there's a 50% opacity, to me, from an, you know, from studying architecture, if you're creating a situation where you can partially see through something, it's more interesting, interesting than if you can't see through it at all. And the theory that a thief will only steal, or somebody will only be curious about something, they can see, not that they can't see, because if they can't see it, they're, you know, typically wouldn't be interested at all, because they don't know what's there, but.
Any more questions currently for the applicant? With that, we'll open up the, the public hearing at 8:12. Welcome, Sarah. I'm getting to be a regular.
Hi, my name is Sarah Van Aston. I live at 16100 South Diamond Lake Road. I am your neighbor. I am kitty-corner from you on the corner of Zanzibar and South Diamond Lake. I, generally speaking, I have no issue with indoor storage. I would actually be fine with them using multiple buildings for indoor storage. Indoor storage looks fine. Outdoor storage looks tacky. So from that perspective, I would be perfectly open to multiple buildings being used for indoor storage. I'm happy to hear that the outdoor storage is going to be more limited and not as visible, because it looks tacky. As far as fencing goes, I have no opinion as long as it's screened. I, I kind of agree that having, not being able to see through it is probably better than being able to see through it. I like the vine idea. I would support you on that. And I'm also very happy to hear that the semi-truck trailer stuff and the repair stuff is stopping, because that was my biggest concern. We do not need more semi-truck traffic there, and it was picking up greatly. So I, generally speaking, I'm supportive of this and the requirements that the staff have put forward with the, but I would be open to multiple buildings being used for it. I also have no problem with long, I, horse trailers often go beyond 28 feet, so I'm perfectly fine with long trailers. Don't want a semi-parking lot. So whatever needs to be put in there to make sure recreational vehicles or other vehicles that are long are fine, we just don't need a bunch of semis parked there. So I'm also in support of all those things. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I agree with Sarah.
Anyone else online?
No.
One question I have for staff in my brain is, do we have, do we distinguish between commercial and recreational vehicles slash trailers? And so if we're limiting this to recreational, do we not need to worry about the other stuff? We're already all covered. I guess that's.
It talks about, more about weight that's allowed. So, and that's kind of my understanding of more the commercial. Vehicles are vehicles that are over a gross weight, like semi is basically, a cab can weigh anywhere between 16 and 20,000, I believe, but with a full trailer, you know, it's a lot more, or even with an empty trailer.
Full trailer can get up to 50,000, but the empty trailers are really pretty negligible when it comes to weight too. So I don't know that we would have the protection against stuff like an empty trailer yard popping up there.
Yeah.
If we're just going by weight.
And currently, I mean, the code says that they're only allowed one.
One vehicle?
One vehicle that exceeds 12,000 pounds may be stored on-site, provided the vehicle does not exceed a gross vehicle weight rating of 18,000 pounds. And then it says, and the vehicle is stored entirely within a building or is significantly screened from the view from the road or surrounding properties.
Do we know roughly what the weight is of those?
If I, if I interject something too, is that, I mean, there's, I think most of the RVs that we get in there are 40 feet long, and they're, I want to say they're pushing 40,000 pounds at least easy, you know, for a diesel pusher. And that's, and we've got probably 10 of those guys.
That's why I think we have to go with the classification of the vehicles more so than just going by the weight or by the length, because there's gonna be a lot of kind of things that we would qualify probably as non-conforming that'll probably fit in those guidelines if we just go purely by weight.
You have to remember that it is in a flood plain, and there's, recreational vehicles are allowed in a flood plain.
So it's a road-ready, and I apologize, I've not memorized our city code yet. But, you know, typically, RVs will be exempt from many of the regulations. I don't know specifically if that's true in Dayton. I'm gonna look through it a little bit more.
So is this, is this concern specific to the area of outdoor storage within the flood plain?
There is a significant portion of the property that is in the flood plain, but then if you're storing larger vehicles, you're moving closer to the right-of-way. Sorry, I was just gonna go back to.
I think Joanna has some specifics on that.
Because the flood plain comes about right here, to these, this building.
Tori, if you can go, page two of your staff report, you've got the flood plain. There we go.
You can see how far, how it touches the building, and it goes through here.
Yep.
And so they, and they don't, they don't want any, the DNR, in a flood plain, they don't want any vehicles that have gas in them or anything parked in that area.
You're not gonna get too many 40-foot RVs in that area. I guess I'm just trying to move on, move this forward a bit. Do we need to add language differently than we have about just recreational vehicles, I guess, is the question I have. And I don't know that answer, because I'm trying to understand the definition of how we define them.
I mean, that's what the applicant put on their application.
So if you have a bus parked there that's used, or a limo that's used in a commercial business, is that recreational?
I would.
And is that a concern? Or a food truck?
That's not a recreational.
I wouldn't consider either one of them.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, is if that's, if that's what we're saying is not allowed, and like boats and RVs, then, and we're saying recreational vehicles only, then I'm pretty comfortable with that phase of the wording, including the trailer size, whether it's even, whether you even say one. I guess we would want to ask the applicant too, do they have any intention of having vehicles that might not qualify for that, if that's something we're gonna go forward with? Are they looking at storing stuff like a food truck or somebody from someone? And do we need to be ready for that?
Well, at the email that's attached, I did ask Joanne that, and they were, they would like to store other things besides recreational, and they did even say semis.
Well, the trailers, not necessarily some of it itself, but it's, it's really, I mean, what we have been storing there, and when we bought the place, that's, that is what, I mean, the description of what we were requesting is what was there before. So, for 20 years, so I don't, I don't know how else to, you know, we're not trying to, like, trying to re-provision the code or something, or reword it, or, or the language. I know, I know it's somewhat, I mean, it seems a little bit restrictive, I guess, the way it's, it's constructed, which is understandable. But at the same time, I mean, I don't, I don't know how that would be, let's, let's say it's, it was a, I guess, like even a diesel pusher, or a semi-trailer, semi-trailer itself. I mean, I don't know why, I'm not trying to focus on just that, but it just has a, as an explanation of, I guess, the trailer itself, being it was, you know, a semi-trailer would be off the ground three or four feet before it even gets to anything that would be in the trailer, you know what I mean? So, I guess, I don't know, I guess, I have a hard time, you know, smashing it all into one category at 12,000 pounds, because there's literally, I would say, half of what we had stored and what the previous owner had stored there doesn't fit any of that, you know, including the 28 feet, because, you know, you know, like, I forget which city council member was stating, his boat is 22 feet, but the trailers extend past that, and, you know, it's, it's a little, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, we're just, we're trying, we're trying to work with, you know, you guys and trying to get this to not be as complicated as maybe as we're making it. But I, I was kind of floating long before, thinking it wasn't complicated because the previous owner had it, you know, was doing what he was doing, and it was working out fine, but.
If I can just speak for a minute, we, the storage season generally goes from like October to end of April. We have not done any advertising for this coming season, because I know all of this is up in the air. We are eliminating the semi-repair person that has been in the building for the last year. He's gone away, so semis will be gone. Moving forward, we don't have a clear definition of who's gonna call us for storage. We haven't even advertised for it yet. What we generally say is we have indoor and outdoor storage. This is what we did in the past. We have indoor and outdoor storage. We charge by the lineal foot. We get calls from any number of people with any number of things. We don't know what that is yet. If you need us to put restrictive language in saying, no, we will only take campers, you know, or this or that, I suppose we can do that. We generally advertise for recreational vehicles, boats, snowmobile trailers, that sort of thing. We're not out there looking for business of. We're not out there looking for business of, we're not going to go for semi repair people again, believe me. So I, I don't know if we need to have a bunch of restrictive language in there because that's really not what we're trying to do is, you know, food trucks come here, you know, that's not what we're doing. So we don't, we don't have a master list for you at this time of what we're trying to do because right now we, we have nothing.
What planetary was the funny question? Just want to make sure that we have some historical context here. No trailers were stored in the floodplain before, period. So that limited the amount of space that was utilized for outdoor storage. We are now changing since, and I have an era photo from 2018 that shows that it was still farmland in the floodplain in 2018, so just a few years ago. Since the Hynants have purchased the property, they've taken away that farmland and added impervious surface, which I have no complaints about. I'm just saying that you now have additional place for storage to happen. So if the previous owner had used it for the storage of semi trailers or whatever, it was a limited number of them because they were not allowed or were within the floodplain itself. So there was limited space for them to be able to be stored. Now you're allowing much more impervious surface, which allows a lot more storage of those types of trailers. So, just so you have some historical context here of what was allowed before, what was happening before versus what's happening now and what's even allowed to happen based on historical photos of the, of the site itself. So, thank you.
One quick question for staff. I noticed when I was driving down the road too, but I don't know if it's a remnant now that it's been paved, but there's a sign that says no commercial vehicles allowed. Is that staying now that it's paved? I notice on east, west.
On Zanzibar?
On Zanzibar.
On Zanzibar, there's a road, that's planning to stay?
It will stay, yes.
So I think that makes it pretty clear then that it needs to be limited to recreational vehicles, if that's the plan. Or whatever that definition is, boats.
So just to clarify, so this would be gross vehicles, vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of not exceeding 12,000 pounds, with the exception of recreational vehicles. Any size recreational vehicle is fine.
Can't we just have it be recreational vehicles? Get rid of the other stuff?
I think you, you do recreational vehicles, campers.
Outside. It's, like, if you want to put other vehicles like cars inside, go for it.
I mean, some boats will exceed that 12,000 pounds.
Yeah.
And then the, the, the one I, I'm hung up a little bit on is the car, the guy, they mentioned someone who's, who's racing cars. It is a semi trailer, but it's, it's a recreational semi trailer. It's not a commercial semi trailer, if that makes sense. And so he's, he's not doing business with it per se. I mean, he might be making a little side money racing cars, but.
Yeah, I think the key with the recreational is your in and outs are going to be much more limited than a commercial use.
Correct. You're not, you're not in there and out, in and out.
I'd have to check with the Department of Vehicle, Motor Vehicles to see, I believe over a certain weight, it's considered a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
Is what, but I, I don't know that, I would have to look into it.
You're correct because then you need a specific license if your trailer exceeds a certain weight.
So that was my thought at least on, on how to limit the in and outs because, I mean, just like the food trucks, right? They'd be in and out, I mean, but I, I know.
Unless they're storing them for the winter or something, right?
Yeah. But I know, I was going to say, I know on my boat, when I've started at places like this in the past, I'm in and out Saturday, in and out Sunday because I don't want to, because we didn't know if we were going back out Sunday, so we put it back, but.
Yeah, most, most of our, our RV storage, you know, that is, is over the winters, the late model cars, we had a whole building full of them just for them. Nobody goes in and out with those. Obviously for the winter, they pull them out in the summertime. It's usually like a couple of weeks out of the year, everybody goes in and out. And then we have a few people that have their boats, like what you're saying is they're in and out, maybe, we have maybe 20 people and they might pull their boat or RV in or out three times a year. You know, it's not, it's not very much.
So are we moving on from the weight or keeping the weight restriction? I'm a little confused.
I suggest removing the weight, just say no commercial vehicles or recreational only, something like that.
If I may, just a point of order, if you have to close the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay.
I will close the public hearing. I, I was going to do it and then Darren jumped in.
Yeah.
Still had it. Yeah, I agree. I, I think remove the weight unless there's a engineering reason on the roadway not to allow it.
No, so essentially I'm interpreting it, this is intended for recreational vehicle or I could just say non-commercial vehicles such as recreational vehicles or personal vehicles. You can work on the word smithing a little bit, but I, I believe that's the intent of the commission.
Yeah, I think you should ask the city engineer too about Peter's question about weight restrictions, in particular in spring, because some of these recreational vehicles are exempt that, from the rules that other people have to follow. Correct? And we, I guess we, if the traffic was heavy, there's no reason to create potholes there faster. And if, maybe it's just even restricting, you know, if they do have vehicles over X weight that they can't move them and they have to follow the commercial road restrictions.
Correct, yeah, you are correct. So we, we put on road restrictions in the, in the spring every year and it's on all city streets and the Zanzibar would include a city street, so.
And it only applies to commercial vehicles?
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
I don't know how big a deal it's going to be.
I don't think it's going to be a big deal. I, I do appreciate that the applicant mentioned they were going to pay back the driveway to limit the, the amount of gravel getting onto Zanzibar.
Are we going to make that a condition? Are we just making that a condition?
I, they offered it, I say we add it.
I add it as a condition, yeah. Are we striking the trailer length? I know there's some discussion on that.
I mean, if we're, if we're limiting to no commercial vehicles, I don't see the, there's a major need for the trailer length probably to be in there anymore as long as it falls into the recreational category.
Because Mr. Charlie, what I would suggest of rewording item three, like striking it all together and putting in like, I still got to work in rewording. So this is intended for storage of recreational vehicles and personal vehicles and no, I'm going to say no commercial vehicles over 12,000 pounds. So this is where I'm a little fuzzy of, you know, can you have a commercial vehicle that's more than 10,000 and less than 12?
Because we have no commercial vehicles on the street, I think we just, it's no commercial vehicles in total.
I would recommend it's ready, yeah, no commercial vehicles.
No commercial vehicles, okay.
Are we, on to the number of buildings, our recommendation? I guess I would agree with people that I'd rather see everything indoors and outdoors. And so if they're putting cars in the building, I guess I don't have much of an issue. Obviously the clear height's going to be the issue, so.
I agree, I think as long as we have inspection right, that's the only piece that I'd be concerned with about having more.
I do think that if we pull up the site plan that they showed us, we should just walk through these buildings to understand, are we going to say just these three buildings or four buildings? Because there's like four buildings clustered there.
I know that this is the one is being emptied out. I'm not sure if the landscaping company, Mead Brothers, is totally out of here. These ones, the garages, they were open when we were out there and they're empty. But this, this person has been in here for a long time and there's a lot stored, you know, in between these two buildings.
Question, question for Greg and Joanne, is that really one building or is it two?
It's two.
It appears like it's one because the two are connected with a, I believe they had cattle in there before, so that, yeah, the top and the north and south, or the east and west side of those buildings have a sliding door connected only by, you know, some, by the doors, I guess, and just the, you know, the, the amount of lumber that it would take to get those two connected, but otherwise they're, it's open in the center. It's the, the one furthest to the south or to the left of your screen that says 30 by 30 in the corner there, that's a really weird building because it's built around what would have been, well, three silos. It's not much of a structure, you know, if the, if the tenant that's there, I mean, he just stores old snowmobile parts, it's been there, I mean, it's, well, it's been there since I was there and I think before then it's been there for 10 years or, or more.
It's more of a lean to.
Yeah, it is more of a lean to, isn't it, yeah. It's totally open.
And do all these buildings have?
Closed off by the silos, but otherwise it's pretty open on the others. The, the part that's in between the two buildings, that's open, but the, the building that says 36 by 140 is a solid building all the way around.
And the other part to the, the other part to the left is really kind of a lean to off of that building, so we generally consider it one building even though it appears from overhead to be two.
Yeah, true.
Greg, do all these buildings have cement floors?
What's that?
Do all, all of these buildings have cement floors or some gravel or dirt?
No, they're all cement.
Cement, okay.
With your guys' preference of those buildings, so we got that sketchup on the screen, would your preference be just those four buildings?
Well, we did, like, all the buildings for storage, the, the small building, the 40 by 55, top left of the screen there, and the 15 by 55, the 15 by 55 is like a six and a half foot clearance inside or something. We, we use that for our personal stuff, it's just, it's almost an unusable building. The 55 by 40, that's kind of a weird building also. It's, the floor is kind of so pitched hard that we generally just store old cars in there, that's kind of it. It's worth, and there's a 30 by 30 in the front and I think he's going to be moving out also, next to Zanzibar there, that guy's definitely going to be moving in October's or November. So that's, I mean, they're just, it's just, the ones, you know, that, that lean to and the 30 by 30, the 55 by 40, the 15 by 50, those are kind of weird. We store just random stuff in there and they're not, it's not really usable for necessarily a camper. I mean, the 30 by 30 maybe if you had something really small, but generally we kind of just have it as random stuff, I guess.
So for the business, probably just those larger ones?
Yeah.
The ones north of what's drawn as your driveway.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that putting, I'd be okay with the condition that we say those four buildings can be used for indoor storage. I don't know.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of thinking about this a lot, just, I have no issue with it. I'm just making everyone aware that we are looking at setting a precedence here of other properties and just making, making everyone aware of that because we do have some other farm properties that are starting to turn over and, and they, they have lots of old buildings that.
I'm guessing we have lots of properties that are already doing indoor storage too without an IUP.
Yep.
That didn't do. Semi truck repair and got in trouble.
I think that's why the, the five-year limit on IUP is probably not a bad thing too, so we have the option to revisit that frequently as we continue to develop across the city. So if we want to start having a different approach on some of those activities as development gets closer, it gives us at least the flexibility.
You know, if we do want to limit it, if that was the majority, I'd be okay saying three buildings too for that matter, if there's some logic to it, but I don't know what that logic is.
I'm, I'm fine with the three on this one, or, or three or four, whatever, whatever you want to count it as.
When I drove by the site, I guess I just liked that a condition that there's a lot of debris still. And I'm just looking at the aerials from when they, before they bought it. There's a concrete debris pile over by those west buildings. There's stump debris. I would just make it a condition you clean up that debris too.
That was part of the, the zoning violation part that, that had to be cleaned up.
Got it.
Yeah, I think, I think everything, there's some, there's still some debris on that back corner, but that's limited, just by the number of dumpsters I can get out there at any one time, but, yeah, with, I think most, most of everything that is on an old Google map site or something or, you know, as an overview, I don't, I don't think it's there anymore.
I guess the last item I really just want to touch on is what do we want to do for screening?
Yeah, the silo that I thought was there is not there. So we can't just go from building to silo. I mean, it's always nice when the fence can be at the building line and not out in front, but the buildings aren't aligned with each other, so we can't just do a straight fence across, I don't think. So I don't know if we, to go straight across and then turn back up into that smaller building on the right or something, or?
I think it, I personally would rather see something like that than a bunch of, bunch of fence everywhere. And it's set back further to that if you want to put it taller, no, it's not as big a deal.
Yeah.
I think what we were trying to go for is leaving the fence in the same spot considering the amount of expense that we've had putting it in, at least the posts anyway. I would, I would be open to a, I love to put the metal back up, but I, I get the, the concern with that or the visual, whatever it is about that. But I was also, I was also adding to it, I mean, there's just the fences there and I, and, yeah, the, this condition of site does not look great, but I've been, I don't, I didn't really care so much at this point because I didn't know what we were going to do, so I wasn't going to do a bunch of work and then have to redo it yet again, so I didn't want to do that. So the, the initial, or my, my vision, I guess, is obviously Zanzibar from pavement to the fence that is currently there would be obviously greenway, planted with shrubs. The fence is going to get some, I would like to do is that the fence have some vines on it, a little more, you know, it's, it's kind of like what you're doing with the, the building plan that you guys saw. It's like you have one large building with, with the same material going vertical, it's, it gets pretty monotonous and probably not, you know, super attractive. So, you know, from an architectural standpoint, I suppose just, you know, adding vines, colorful vines, or, or I prefer not to have flowering vines, it just seems still like you're focusing on the fence at that point, but having just england ivy, something super simple, grows really fast. You, you essentially be creating a, a large green wall at some point. You know, the, the more it grows, the less metal you'd see if that's, if that would be allowable.
If I may say something, that's basically seasonal. In the winter, the vines aren't going to grow, there's not going to be any green, then you'll see metal.
But there would be at least, you know, you don't see, it's, it's like a tree in the winter time too, you know, it's, it doesn't look exactly pretty. It doesn't have any leaves on it, it's bare, you know, so it, it's, it would go from a metal fence and green in the summertime to a metal fence with branches on it or, you know, whatever's left over from the vine growing on it. But I don't know, I don't know how to rectify that and create, create a, you know, a really nice boundary. Yeah, some pine trees or something, but that, you know, that's really short term, or that's not such a short term, but it's, 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 it takes too darn long for a pine tree to go from something that you put into the ground and have it growing, it takes like 10 years to even get it really going. And then you've got another 10 years before it gets big enough before they're touching each other. And I, I don't think that's a, personally a viable screening option. It's nice, but it's, it's too much of a long-term plan. I'd like something a little more short-term. And if that means, you know, shrubbery, I, I don't, I don't know what else we can do, but I can get pretty creative about it if we need to.
And the location of the fence is one that we'd like to keep where we currently have the posts for a logistical reason of keeping the flow available that we currently have for our floodplain plan that you want to see, you know, if we need to move things around and people coming in and out. If we move that fence more to the west, it's going to make driving around in there a little more difficult?
Oh, and one of the other things too is if you look at the, the previous design, the way that the previous owner had it, there was about four or five, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, there was five entrances to that property and we, just for our own, you know, getting this to work right without, you know, 16 different ways to get into the property is we chopped it down to one and. And we created a brand-new driveway on the thirteen, three ninety-one property. So that that driveway is completely separate from the storage area. And that was, that was intentional to, to stop, you know, drop traffic from moving anywhere it wants, anytime it wants, anywhere on Zanzibar. And that is one of the code, unintentional code corrections, I guess, that we, that we initiated because we just wanted, you know, one entrance, not, you know, the, the four or five that were there.
Let me, let me ask a question of, of the fellow commission here. You know, obviously, this is a five-year IUP is, is what we're, we're going at right now. They're doing a fair amount of improvements to the property, they're cleaning up to try to bring in informants. We don't currently, I mean, they're right across from Elm Creek Park Reserve and the Walfields are next door. And, and the, probably the one neighbor that can see them is here. What, you know, from the standpoint of, of making them do the extra work of moving the fence or from where it's currently is? I mean, what, is there any real heartburn there for five years? And then in five years, we revisit that if it is an issue?
I don't, I don't see any particular urgency behind moving on it. I will say that where the fence is, you know, obviously, then it's going to have to be four feet, it can't be eight feet. And all their posts in the ground are going to have to be cut off and things adapted anyway, so.
Didn't the, didn't the home business use require a six-foot minimum for screening though? And this is where we were going to ask for a six-foot on the front, on the Zanzibar side?
So the issue within the zoning ordinance that it only allow, the city only allows four-foot fences in front yards?
To me, if that's what we're going to do and we didn't move the fence, you could just go without the fence. Because it's so close to the road, you're driving by, you're going to be looking over the fence. I mean, you're not doing anything. So to me, if that's what we're going to require, I'm not concerned about the fence.
Yeah, four-foot is useless, six-foot would cover the screening requirement for the IUP. And if we could leave it there where it is, it would help with the flow of traffic within the site and create a better screening from the outside, I would think. You would have, you would see less if it's closer to the road, you wouldn't be seeing all the, you know, the unsightliness, shall we say, that people don't want to see. And that we would like to keep our customers more secure from, you know, we, we would like to keep it as private as possible for the sake of our clientele. So closer to the road, where it currently is, six feet to cover the screening requirement put in place by the IUP would, in this case, override, would it not, the residential requirement of four feet?
Does, code for the home extended business says outdoor storage may be allowed provided the outdoor storage area is significantly screened from the view of the street. So that would mean, and then we'd look at our fence ordinance that says in the front, it can only be four feet high.
So kind of.
It's a little bit of a contradiction.
Right.
But also, is our fence ordinance, I mean, this is where I, I'm hung up on this, is our fence ordinance geared at a neighborhood like mine where your, you know, your tiny houses on top of each other and not on a, not on a twenty-acre parcel? I mean, that's, that's the, the issue I have here with this one.
If I could provide some context, just, and it may be beneficial to the conversation. The four-foot restriction in the front yard with six feet on the sides is a restriction in residential districts and is anticipated for residential uses. Whereas this is a business use or commercial in nature, the standards for commercial and industrial districts in the zoning ordinance is six feet in the front yard, eight feet on the sides in the rear. So if it's desired, that could be something to consider or incorporate. Granted, this is a residential district, so we don't have much leeway in where we can consider it. But just for reference, those are the standards that would apply if it was a business district.
Isn't it, this is residential, it's ag.
Agricultural.
Ag is considered a residential district.
Okay.
Thanks for clearing that up. I will sleep just fine tonight if we did your recommendation, Peter, but I, meaning, why change it too much? But I will also say, back to your earlier comment, that why I want to give it some thought and maybe do it right is we are setting a precedence here for everyone else that comes forward, is that, you know what, if you're going to do this, you got to screen it a certain way. And I don't know what that certain way is yet, I thought we were trying to figure out.
No, I, I don't disagree with that. I, I was looking at it from the other improvements such as paving the driveway and other improvements that they are adding to the site.
If I could ask a clarifying question, so Greg and John, your intent is to have the six-foot fence along the property line, along Zanzibar, is that right?
Yes.
And the driveway immediately goes, like, how would you have, be able to access pat into the driveway if there's a fence there?
I was going to put in a keypad entrance. So the, what I'm trying to create is a situation, most of, most of the clients that we had before, I don't think we had anything valued under, yeah, maybe one or two things. But everything is in the twenty-five, thirty, forty, hundred, two-hundred range, you know? And one of the things is, is, you know, as a, you know, as a business, A, I don't want any issues. I don't want to cause the city any extra issues with, you know, phone calls, all my stuff's got stolen. You know, that's what I'm trying to eliminate, number one. Or two, my, the, the people that store there want to know that their stuff is secure. So in doing it that way, having a taller fence and having a, a one-defined way to go in and out, which is what we created, that's the one-defined ways there. Keeping, keeping that flow in one spot, then I can, I can definitely control who goes in, who goes out, and I know who goes in and who goes, who goes out without an issue. And it eliminates more work for me, more, more work for the city, more work for everyone, you know? And it's, it's just, you know, it's efficient, it's efficient and, and reasonable to, to do it that way. Otherwise, you're, you basically just create a bunch of headache for yourself or for me and you, you know, for starting getting calls for people stealing stuff. I mean, if, if Zanzibar does become a main or more of a traffic, a spot for more traffic, then I, you know, I would, I would like to, whatever traffic goes down that road, I would like to keep, I guess, prying eyes from looking, you know, into the property. Even if I didn't have a business there at all, I'd still want the fence, you know, just because it is a busy road, period.
The concern that I have is if, if we're allowing forty-five-foot RVs, there needs to be enough space that they can pull off of Zanzibar and sit in the driveway and then open the gate. So, and I think, I mean, I think everyone's kind of on the same page and there's enough time between planning commission and city council that the applicant can work out a fence plan of where the fence is going to go and still allow, I'll call stacking space along within the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, that, that brought up a whole new concern too. Zanzibar's not terribly busy now, but it is busier now than it was when it was a gravel road. And it's only going to get worse as people realize that it's now not gravel as soon as Dean's opens up here in the fall. And, and so that's a concern of mine that I guess wasn't an issue that I realized ten minutes ago.
Yeah, and as far as the gators, somebody driving in, it's a matter of each person, basically, they don't have to stop to get out to open the gate. It, it opens automatically with the key fob.
You know, I want to make a suggestion, just to keep moving this forward, and I'll forward it to you, John, and maybe you take it to council and you see what Greg brings you back. But I would like to see different screening than the fence on the road, because I think that's an eyesore in and of itself. But just to show Ryan, that's what I'm talking about for a potential fence. And I'll send the screenshot to John, he can send it to an applicant. There's probably plenty of options, but one thing about this option is the main traffic is going to be coming through that entrance and then in. And you could have a slide-out here if they wanted, or they could say, you know what, we don't need a slide-out, we're going to save the money and not have a gate. That's just going to be my suggestion. I don't know if you guys got another suggestion to throw at them, but where the current fence is, it's right on the right-of-way, and that is going to be a busy road. And the current fence, right on the right-of-way, one, it's not going to serve a function if it's fifty percent opaque. And two, if it's what they had there, it's an eyesore, eight-foot tall metal fence. Right on the right-of-way.
I don't disagree with that fence location that Darren's proposing. Although at the same time, I don't know if, to use your phrase really, I don't know if I'll lose any sleep if it stays where it is.
I'm more concerned about the precedence if we're going to allow it. And so when people realize that they're going to do it, they realize that, hey, this is our, well, one, it's part of our code that has to be significantly screened. Is that, you know, they, they realize that this is what we're trying to accomplish with the fence and think about when you put that placement in. And obviously, I think our code needs a little bit of work on the fence when it comes to this specific application.
I think that in the future, you're, you, yeah, you probably want to probably push a little bit different language on the code on the fence part, especially because as things get a little more busy, I guess, in that area, there's going to be a lot of other people that are probably going to come forward. And if, if you, if you push, if you, you know, I'm not going to point out specific areas, but I mean, you're looking at an area of you of Hennebuck County. You can do the same thing everywhere in and around that area, and you can go, okay, is, there's probably a third of the people or parcels in that area that are, that look similar to that or have lots of other stuff that, you know, it would definitely benefit having a fence or something else. I'm guessing you're going to get complaints about it, complaints about it at some point, I don't know. But I think it would be a good idea to be able to utilize something that's a little more hundred percent, you know, closures that where you don't see in the property and are able to, you know, store the equipment that's already there on the other properties that you can already see. And it's, it's, I know it's going to come up again from somebody, somebody's going to say something and, you know, just, just from what's in the area, you know?
Have we covered all the topics that we feel necessary?
Other than the fence.
Other than the fence?
But.
I'm going to make a motion to approve based on the text amendments regarding the recreational vehicles and no commercial vehicles that they can use the four buildings in the front for indoor storage and that the fence gets relocated per Darren's sketch that he'll provide to staff that we've seen, obviously, that the applicant has not seen, but.
I would add that maybe it's a.
Yeah, and I, I would suggest that it's six feet tall because it's a commercial use. And I know it's a residential rural area, farm area, but.
Do you care on the opaque or non-opaque, just to clarify since?
I, I guess I'm indifferent.
I think opaque is better than non-opaque, that's just me.
Yeah.
Okay, so an opaque six-foot fence.
I was going to make the, a similar, or just an adjustment to your fence's location is either somewhat similar to what Darren.
Similar utility.
Similar to what Darren.
Yeah, similar utility, it doesn't have.
If it doesn't have to be exact and if.
The applicant can propose an adjustment for council to refer, based on the sketch that we're providing.
I mean, frankly, if they go to the other corner, corner of that other building, there's some added benefit maybe to them or not.
Yeah. Yep. Think that covers it?
Yep.
Did we need to strike the twenty-eight-foot length and pause?
Oh, yes, please, that was part of the text amendment, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, I'd feel fine putting a second on that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Crossland, a second from Olson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four and zero. And this goes to council.
Second meeting.
Twenty-sixth, September twenty-sixth.
Yep.
September twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, hopefully we pounded all of the issues, so you guys can. Yeah.
There's a sketch on it.
There'll be a sketch, yeah. Well, you can review a little quicker.
I guess, moving on, notice and announcements. The next planning commission meeting scheduled for October fifth, we do, it sounds like we have a public hearing that night. And then I am bringing an update of the planning commission to city council on September twelfth, I believe.
Tuesday, next week.
Tuesday. So if any of my fellow commissioners have any, anything to report on or.
Trying to harass you?
Isn't that what you do here?
Yeah, that's true, that's a good point.
Is the purpose of this to maybe help council direct us on, and our new community development director on some of the tasks that we might try to accomplish in the next three to six months?
Yeah, it's an update of what we've been doing the last year and then things we, we would look to accomplish. So, okay, I'm probably putting my slide together this weekend sometime. So if you want to forward me any comments you may have or thoughts.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that's all I have. Anyone else?
No, but I'd probably make Paul happy then if we just moved to the next piece. So I'll, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Then a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can all be happy.
Motion passes.
We love being here.
Meeting is adjourned.